Good evening. And let me call to order the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors meeting for February 8th, 2023. And welcome, everyone, to the meeting this evening. And I apologize for my voice if you can't hear me, but it sounds like it's coming through pretty well. So, I'm recovering from a virus. So, anyway, as is our custom, we usually observe a moment of silence. So if you would join me this evening in holding a moment of silence together. Thank you. Thank you. Now, would you please join the board in the pledge allegiance of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Mr. Lewis, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. No special actions? That brings us right to our first round of public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment this evening? Please come to the podium and state your name and where you live in Newtown and...
My name is Carol Erbeck, 102 Rittenhouse Circle in Delancey Court. At your last meeting on January 25th, Supervisor Calabro stated that for over a year, there was a problem with the fence between Society Place and Delancey Court. He asked Mica to look into the matter. And subsequently, on February 6th, Anna Gindhard, the zoning officer, walked the fence with the chairman of our landscape committee. It was her opinion that there is no unrepaired damage to the fence between our two communities. She took pictures during the walk and she planned to inform Mr. Lewis of her findings. And I can say that almost a year ago, in April of '22, there were some dead trees that fell on the fence. They were removed then and the fence was repaired. And since then, we know of no other repairs that have need or needed. So we hope that you got the report? Oh, you did? Oh, good. Oh, well, that's good. So we can just put that aside, right? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Okay. We'll go to reports of committees and boards. And we welcome Peggy Driscoll from the Planning Commission.
Hi. Good evening, Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Newtown Township Planning Commission. To give you a synopsis of our meeting of last night, the Planning Commission finalized its review of the joint comprehensive plan and voted unanimously to recommend that the board adopt it with the added recommendation that section number five, livable communities, to be updated to include the corrections suggested by our member Warren Dallas, who is also president of the Newtown Fire Association. His draft is attached to this. We also recommend that updates to the maps as prepared by our planner, Michelle Fountain, be included. We are preparing a cover letter, which will better explain our support of the plan, which allows us flexibility to adapt to an ever-changing environment while upholding our goal of preserving our jointure and protecting our residents. We are also recommending that each municipality create an addendum to the plan with some of the specific goals they may have. For example, we would recommend that Newtown create some goals and benchmarks to help protect our environment, such as adopting an electric vehicle charging station ordinance, encouraging the use of LED lighting, and eliminating unnecessary single-use plastics. It was noted that the plan also recommends creating and/or updating our climate emergency preparedness plan, but we do not understand what that might entail. With the board's permission, as time permits, we would like to investigate this further. The commission will be committed to using the plan as our guide when reviewing new land development plans and zoning amendments. Applicants should be made aware that these principles will be at the forefront of our discussions for future land development. And that was all we had.
Anybody have questions for Peggy? Ms. Driscoll?
Yes, I... Can I understand exactly what you said about adding addendums? You didn't... You mentioned a few specific things like LED lighting, single-use plastics. Is that something you're recommending that the board...
Yes, approve.
And you're going to come back with a written...
Yes.
...report on that?
Yes. We have... Different townships have different zoning. We have zoning that Upper Makefield and Wrightstown do not have, so on. So we suggest that each township prepare an addendum that is specific to their township.
Okay. Thank you. Was I right in understanding that we needed to send a copy of Mr. Dallas's...
Yeah, changes to the other jointure.
To the other jointure members? How about the Bucks County Planning Commission?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, they are just updates that he feels are necessary to be in the updated plan.
So did everyone on the board have a chance to look at that briefly? What Warren wrote up for the livable communities? And anybody have any objections of letting the... Having the township manager send that along to the other jointure members and...
Well, doesn't Peggy have to prepare the letter as an introduction first?
This is just for Warren's one-pager.
Okay.
I think they wanted a preview of that to see if there's any changes that either the jointure partners had or the Bucks County Planning Commission was my understanding, that they were a little more critical.
I think it's more just updating the wording under the fire protection about response times, national standards, and hiring additional career firefighters. Assess the need in locations for new fire stations to support requirements of the residents and businesses for the health and the health and safety of the firefighters.
Right. That's what I got out of it. The question was, can we instruct the township manager to go ahead and send that to the other jointure partners?
Yes.
Into the BCDC? Just that one-pager?
Well, yeah. Also, the maps that Michelle Fountain has...
That will come along. I think they've already seen that.
Oh, yeah.
But they haven't seen what Warren wrote yet.
Yeah, I think you're actually combining two separate issues for clarification. The fifth, I think it was the fifth of the principles that...
Yes, principle number five.
Right. We had requested that that move ahead because we thought that was important enough, and that was the only one where the Planning Commission wanted to actually change the body of the comprehensive plan itself. And we wanted it, and since we weren't done with everything else, we wanted that to get ahead so they could get a head start on that. As the supervisors didn't address it at your last meeting, and it's really now in the same stream as the general comprehensive plan, you can either send it ahead because it still is going to require some work and they're going to have to decide as a jointure, and each municipality has to decide if they want to change that language. But as to the whole comprehensive plan, that package has to go also, but that is actually a separate lane.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Everybody clear?
I think it's updating the verbiage in it, and I think the other townships should be fine with it.
Yeah, I think so, too. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. And that brings us to board members' reports. I do have a chairman's report. Just a couple of things that... Or just one activity that I needed to mention or wanted to mention. The Joint Zoning Council met last Thursday, and there were like five or six various... Five or six items on the agenda. Well, there's more than that on the agenda, but they fell under five or six categories. First of all, they had the reorganization and designated, nominated, and elected officers. Chester Pogonowski is still the chair. And there was a brief report of the status of about five or six different ordinances that Mr. Schenckman is actually working on, in part with others. There was a discussion about the comprehensive plan, just as we had just now, and what... Where each municipality was in the approval process of the comprehensive plan. There was a presentation of cost sharing to support the defending of the validity challenge by PROVCO. While that was being discussed, we looked at what the annual formula is for paying our bills through the jointure. So the annual formula is a percentage contribution that each municipality contributes, and it's based on square mileage, population, and I think total assessed value for each of the municipalities. And they come up with a percentage of each of those, and then they average those percentages out. And it comes out to Newtown Township, part of the budget is 47.17%. Upper Makefield's percentage is 37.82%, and Wrightstown Township is 15.02. And just thought that was an interesting tidbit. Other than that, I yield to the vice chair for any report.
Do I question for the chair in regards to that percentages that you just mentioned? What does that come down to in dollars and cents? Do we know, or do we have a...
I do.
I think last year was about $20,000 total. Was that right?
Yes.
From Newtown Township?
I turned right to it.
The total assessment for the three townships was around 20,000, 24,000?
Eighteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight.
Right. And we pay 47% of that?
Yeah. That's our cut.
Okay.
It's out of 40,000. That would be the 47% of 40,000.
I'm confused. I thought you just said 18,000.
The 18,000 is what we pay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep. Now, Mr....
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to add to that, that Upper Makefield was a party to the hearing at the zoning hearing board on January 30th. So they're paying for their lawyer to participate, which I was thankful for. I attended the January 26 Bucks County Tax Collection Committee. Very exciting. The Mr. Lazaro from the Keystone Collection Agency, which is responsible for collecting earned income tax, which I hope everybody knows, if you're employed and live in Newtown, you pay a 1% earned income tax. Half of that goes to Council Rock School Board. If you are living in Newtown and working in Philadelphia, you pay a much... And working in Philadelphia, you pay a much higher earned income tax. We also get earned income tax from non-residents who work in Newtown. So the report from the Keystone was that for Bucks County as a whole, the earned income tax gained 7.6% in 2022 versus 2021. I also got from Mr. Lewis the Keystone reports for Newtown Township specifically for 2022 and 2021. And our resident earned income tax did increase in 2022 versus 2021. I believe it was about four point something percent. And this, overall, it was a modest increase. It was also mentioned that two townships, Falls Townships and Langhorn Borough, instituted their own earned income tax in 2023. So we won't be collecting any earned income tax from residents from those townships who work in Newtown. And I believe Mr. Lewis told me that that could be about $170,000 per year, something like that, a loss based on that alone. So that's the report from there. The other thing I want to mention is February is National Black American History Month, which is an annual observance originating in the United States, and it has received official recognition from governments in the United States and Canada, and more recently has been observed in Ireland and the United Kingdom. Mr. Kevin Antoine, who is the chief diversity officer at Bucks County Community College and also the chair of our Human Relations Commission, had posted on Facebook a notice of the 2023 Martin Luther King Jr. Dream Builder Awards event, which will be at the Bucks County Community College on February 23rd. And you need to RSVP by February 10th. So go to the Bucks County Community College, and you can learn more about that. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
I'm already signed up for that. Ms. Secretary Treasurer?
I have no committee reports this evening, but I would like to say, fly eagles, fly. That's my report for tonight.
On the road to victory. Mr. Calabro?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
I have one very important item. I'd like to say, happy birthday to Mr. Calabro.
Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate that. I try not to have one every year, but now that you remind me...
I saw on the calendar, sorry.
We should have given you the night off. All right. Bring us to... We have no public hearings, no land development, reports of officials, and we have an engineer's report.
Thank you. Yep. The first item we have tonight is the DiArcangelo Minor Subdivision Project Financial Security Release Number One. This is the final for that project. So based on our inspection of the work that's completed, we recommend that the township release the amount of $339,623.90 to the developer from the financial security that's held.
I'll make that motion to approve.
A motion. Do we have a second? Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion from the board?
When this goes out for bidding, you mean it goes out to a pen bid where contractors can... The proposal goes out to pen bid?
Yeah, for the road program. Yep, it'll go out for pen bid.
We're talking about the DiArcangelo...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Financial release.
You're ahead of the game. You're ahead of the game. That's okay.
Someone wants to get out of here.
This is on Linton Hill, right?
Yep.
Is it just two houses?
It's just two houses. Yep, minor subdivision.
They look very nice. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of paying the Financial Security Release Number One for DiArcangelo subdivision, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
All right. Our next item is we're seeking bid authorization for the 2023 Liquid Fuels Road Program. Mr. Max stole my thunder a little bit earlier about where, you know, eventually this will be up on pen bid. So just to sort of summarize, we're treating this project the same as we do every other annual road program. We have a few roads that are included in the base bid. I've included the sheet for the board's information. And we have several other streets that are alternate bids that basically gives the township flexibility, depending on when the prices come in, to award additional streets as the, you know, budget allows. So we're shooting to... Basically, if we can seek authorization to bid, hopefully next week, place the advertisement, we can open bids sometime in March, and hopefully by the end of March, have a contract awarded. So tonight, yep, we're just seeking authorization to put that... To put it up on pen bid.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion and we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motions and seconds, all around. Recording secretary, I'll let you choose whether it was John or Ellen. Okay. Any further discussion from the board?
Just to clarify, is this a total of four and a half miles of roads? I think I totaled it up.
Yep, it's about four and a half with the base bid and all of the alternate bids. We likely won't get to that, just based on, you know, the amount of funding that's there, but that's the total that we're including in the bid. Yep.
Based on that, it's about $298,000 per mile.
That sounds about right. Yep.
That sounds... That sounds like a lot of money. And maybe some of the roads are wider, and that's why they might cost more?
Yeah, there's some variability with the roads. It's good that we have, you know, liquid fuels funding, obviously, is a large portion of this project, so.
How much is from liquid fuels?
Mica, do you have the breakdown? Sorry to call you there, of liquid fuels funding?
I'm sorry if I...
No, that's okay.
Didn't get you.
I know the total budget, you know, is around, you know, a million. I'm not sure how much percentage of that is liquid fuels. It's a very large portion.
So there's 530,000 out of liquid fuels is budgeted, 300,000 from general fund, and then another 167,000 from the American Rescue Plan.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
And the amount comes in from PennDOT at some point about the Department of Transportation?
Yes.
About what the actual amount is from liquid fuels. So we have had our discussion. Any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of authorizing the request for bids for the 2023 Liquid Fuels Road Program, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay. Anything else for the engineer before we move on to the solicitor? Okay. Mr. Solicitor, you're on.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson Fisher. There are two action items on the solicitor's report this evening. The first is to deal with the potential enactment of an ordinance to establish a maximum speed limit of 25 miles per hour on North Sycamore Street and South Sycamore Street in Newtown Township. If you're inclined, it would be a motion and a second and a vote on that consideration. You have copies of the proposed ordinance in your package. It's very short and took the point that all this has changed the speed limit.
Are you asking for a motion? I'll make that.
You have a motion? I have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. A motion and a second. Do we have any discussion from the board? We also have a traffic study in the packet.
Correct.
That gives some rationale for this.
Correct.
I hope everybody had a chance to look at that. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. I mean, any questions from the public? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the ordinance to enact the speed limit reduction on North and South Sycamore Streets, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
That'll be ordinance number 2023 O-2. The second action item for your consideration today is the request of Namita Powers of Three Grace Circle in Newtown Township for a one-year extension of the zoning relief that she received from this zoning hearing board. She wants an extension until February 5 of 2024. In your package is a letter from her explaining the difficulty she's had in finding architects and getting this project moving. She just has retained an architect, and she realizes she's going to need more time to complete this project.
Motion to approve?
A motion to approve. Do we have a second? I'll second it. A motion and a second. Do we have any questions for the solicitor on this? Reading the letter, it definitely sounded like there was a hardship.
Yes.
If there's not currently a hardship, there was in times before, so.
Without going through it in any detail, she has some personal reasons for it, as well as, you know, post-pandemic reasons for it, just difficulty with the economy, getting things moving.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. That's all in our report this evening.
Wow, okay. That brings us to the manager's report. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of this evening is $5,581,535. Plan expiration before the board, no action required. We have the chief Hearn here, the monthly chief's report. Good evening, Chief.
Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, board members. Please excuse my voice as well. I'm a little under weather. January police report documented 2055 calls for service, documented just under 27,000 miles in our patrol fleet month of January. We did have a busy January. We had 21 arrests, nine for theft, four of which were from our vehicle theft, one false report involving a fatal crash, which happened on Thanksgiving Day bypassing Sycamore Street, two fraud investigations, one simple assault, one narcotics possession, and two warrants out of the Bucks County Sheriff's Office, not including the five DUIs we had arrested this month. There were 18 new cases referred to detectives, some of which were the fatal fire on Headley, a robbery attempt behind the Jakes and Steak and Hoagie Factory on Richborough Road, three death investigations, motor vehicle and catalytic converter thefts, mobile frauds, and two child line investigations. There were 69 traffic crashes, two injuries, 28 non-injuries. There were 182 citations issued and 262 warnings issued. Our truck enforcement worked on two details, one with the task force, one solo, resulting in 28 vehicle inspections and resulting in five citations, 11 warnings, and one vehicle was placed out of service. The notable jobs for the month of January, we had, as you know, we did have the fatal fire on Headley, and a 76-year-old female passed away from smoke inhalation. And our officers arrived first on location and did a heroic attempt to try to rescue that female, was beaten back by the flames, and they couldn't gain access to the property. But our officers did an outstanding job attempting to save a life. On January 2nd, we did have a successful life-saving cardiac arrest on Williams Avenue. Two officers, Officer Acorpo Depe and Officer Helvig, administered CPR to a male in cardiac arrest and successfully revived him. And he's doing well today. On January 26th, we did have, like I mentioned, a strong-arm robbery behind the Richborough location of Jakes involving juveniles. They were all taken into custody. Public service announcements. Mailbox test. Terry Drive location, the mailbox was finally updated with a new mailbox. However, I would still strongly advise you to drop off inside the post office or just prior to collection rather than using facilities, because if they have a key, they can still gain access to them boxes. Speed signs on Newtown-Urally Road were put up by DPW. We placed our donated signboards out there, as well as our decoy cars, and our enforcement procedures will proceed shortly thereafter. We're also going to do the same for Sycamore Street now. We have to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the chief?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
When you say a strong-arm robbery, does that mean an armed robbery? Is that what you mean?
No, it means that a user hands in physical confrontation, no weapons involved.
And did I hear another question?
Yeah. Hi, Chief. As you know, residents up and down Lower Darlington Road are complaining about semi-tractor trailer trucks being parked on Lower Darlington Road. And I know that parking is allowed, at least on one side of the road. And it's difficult or impossible. You can't enforce a law that doesn't exist. But I was wondering if, for example, if the board of supervisors were to... Are able to limit the parking on Upper Lower Darlington Road, like in the south of Frost Lane on the east side, there's no parking. So there's a precedent for that in Lower Darlington Road, and especially when the... Hopefully someday, the trial will be finished, and hopefully it will look very beautiful. And to have these trucks parked right alongside the trail, I think we're going to have more complaints from residents. Do you think it's a good idea to, I mean, in terms of enforcement, to... Do you think it's a good idea to, I mean, in terms of enforcement, to prevent, to disallow parking north of Frost Lane on Lower Dollington Road? What's your opinion on that?
That would be a board decision. Obviously, if truck enforcement for trucks parked on the highway is a visual obstruction to the pedestrian walkway and environment in the neighborhood, if the board wishes to enact some type of ordinance for limiting truck parking along that stretch, that's your prerogative. If you do that, I will enforce it. But I need some type of meat to actually do that.
Right. What if, I mean, personally, coming out of Everett Drive, there was a big semi-tractor trailer truck parked very close to the intersection of Everett Drive and Lower Dollington. So it obstructed the line of sight, making it more difficult for me to make a left-hand turn onto Lower Dollington because I couldn't see further down the road. I had to drive out into the road to see that. So it's not only an eyesore, it could be a danger at times. I know that there may be more than one truck driver doing this, is that your understanding?
I believe there was multiple trucks out there at times. Yes, sir.
Right. I don't know if anybody has been in communication with them, but I've noticed that some occasions they do park just north of Frost Lane on the west side of Lower Dollington behind some trees. And it's less obstructive over there and less of an eyesore. So, you know, we may have some way of accommodating some truck parking, but certainly I'm, I'm not in favor of parking right alongside the trail once it's completed.
I believe if the neighbors know who owns the truck, if you could courageously ask them to relocate it to an area that commercial trucks wouldn't diminish the neighborhood value, it would probably be more beneficial than the board taking action. But if the board wishes to take an ordinance action, you know, I'll enforce the law enforcement perspective.
Well, that's just a problem. I don't know how to contact them. It looks like the trucks are rented. If the one I've seen, I don't know if they're personally owned. But I'm not quite sure how to contact whoever is parking those trucks. I didn't want to get into a confrontation with a truck owner and talk to them directly. But I know if you might be able, if you ever run into them, maybe you can convey a message.
If I happen to pass by and he's getting out of his truck, I don't mind having a conversation with somebody.
Okay. Thank you very much. You're the one with the gun, so it should be okay.
The gun doesn't apply to that.
Any other questions for the chief? Let me, let me also extend my thank you to the officers for responding to Headley and doing their best.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you, chief.
And the CPR guys administering the CPR and saving that life. All right. We can, anything else from the manager? Yes, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other board action under my report this evening. It's the consideration to purchase three police vehicles, again, from Chapman Auto through Co-Stars. The total amount for the purchase and the upfitting through Havus is a hundred and ninety-five, nine hundred and eight dollars and twenty-two cents. We had budgeted two hundred and fifteen thousand in the capital plan for 2023. So the appropriate motion would be authorization to purchase three police vehicles from Chapman Auto through Co-Stars in the amount of a hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and twenty-two cents.
And the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Okay. Any questions for the manager on that?
Yeah. What would be the expected delivery date on these vehicles? I know that's.
Likely 2024.
2024? Okay. I mean, our, our existing vehicles are in good enough shape that we could hold off to 2024 for these new three, the three new ones?
So we, we still don't have the three that we placed in order from the American Rescue Fund money middle of last year. So once we get those in, we'll sort of rotate the fleet. And then once we get these in, hopefully before the end of this year, we'll see. We'll be able to, we'll be upgraded a little bit more, but we do have some, some vehicles with some issues at this time, but overall, the fleet's running.
Does, chief, you have faith in the existing fleet until we get the new cars?
I don't worry.
Do, do you have faith in our existing fleet until we get the new cars, that everything is okay for the time being?
I really don't have a choice in the matter, sir. Our officers are told about taking care of the fleet until we get our new cars in. But the problem is the inventory with the new car dealers is very slim. Everybody knows it. The chips are creating a problem, so we have to order in advance of what we normally do. And it still takes close to a year to get these cars in. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this authorization payment to purchase is good for the rest of the year?
That's correct.
Great. At least. And if I did my math right, this looks like a nineteen thousand dollar savings from what was budgeted.
That's correct. We'll, we'll still have to purchase minor equipment out of that line item, but this is the bulk of it.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions for the manager on this? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of authorizing the purchase of three police vehicles from Chapman Auto through Co-Stars in the amount of one hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and twenty-two cents, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have on my report.
Great. Ms. Snyder?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from our January twenty-fifth, 2023 meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? From the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. And all those in favor of approving the minutes of January twenty-fifth, 2023, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
I'd like to make a motion to pay our bills in a total of three hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-one cents. This is.
Second?
December to February.
Okay. Yep. We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion from the board?
I have a question about a couple of odd-looking invoices from MJ Electronic Solutions. I'm sorry if, might catch you off guard on this, but it says remove DVR and Highway Garage, fourteen hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. I didn't know what the highway, where the Highway Garage was and what's, then, then there was, that was on page one. On page nine, it was another one from removing or slash replacing NVR from the police. I don't know what that is either. And that was for nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
So those, those are both video equipment, that's security cameras. The old Highway Garage is out past the police station. It's the red building. You see, sort of see it coming up north on four thirteen.
Okay.
That we removed the old video devices from in there and linked it in with the new NVR that's over in police.
What is NVR?
It's a, it's a, a video recording. It's like the, it's a security system recording computer.
So it's pretty complex.
Yeah.
Considering the price.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the total of.
I think we start the vote on this one. So any other questions from the board, from the public? Let me call the question. Those in favor of paying our bills according to the bills list of February eighth, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Got, motion passes four to one.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the total of inter-fund transfers in the amount of three hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and two cents.
Second.
A motion and a second. We have any discussion about the inter-fund transfers? Seeing none. Any from the public? Call the question. Those in favor of approving the inter-fund transfers for February eighth, 2023, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right. Thank you, Ms. Snyder. That brings us to our second round of public comment. Do we have any public comments this evening for our second round? Mr. DiApril?
Good evening, John DiApril, Newtown Grant, biggest and the best. Got a primary election coming up in a few months, and Republicans came out with who they have running. And I know there's two positions for people that are sitting on the board now. Do we hear anything about who the Democrats are putting up? I mean, Phil has been, has gone into his eighteenth year now, likes to fall back on, oh, a previous board, a previous board. Well, Phil, after putting eighteen years in, you were part of those previous boards. And Al Snyder filling in a two-year term, controversial election we had last time. You know, the one person was winning in the daytime and overnight, all of a sudden, Helen won. Okay. So I mean, is there anything, or you want to wait till next meeting till after the, the thing is due for the county? So anybody want to say anything about that? No? Okay. Other than that, too bad Johnny Mac's not up because I'd like to see him. Sooner or later, John, sooner or later to get you because, I mean, I'm hearing a lot of bad things coming out of your development, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiApril. We'll let the political entities do their thing and make the announcements. Okay. Any other public comment? Any old business? I, I have a quick bit of old business, just to report, report that I've got a couple of recent submissions, or we've got a couple of recent submissions for boards and committees. It still didn't make any, I, I have to go back and look. I just ran out of time to update my list to see if that brought us anyone, any one of the committees up to a quorum. We left a couple of committees off because they couldn't, the people that put their names in did not account for a quorum yet. So I will review that and I promise to have that ready to report at the next meeting.
Did you get a, there was one person who volunteered for the Economic Development Committee?
That's one, but that made three out of nine.
I thought there were seven. Isn't there only seven needed for the?
People who expressed interest?
No, no. The total committee number is seven rather than nine. I think we had reduced it. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know.
The, the page that I looked at said, still said nine.
That, so they need, they need five. They would need five people for a quorum?
Yes. You want to make a couple of phone calls?
Well, I did. I recruited, you know, my old real estate agent who sold me my house. He lives in Newtown.
Okay.
And convinced him. He did talk to Weedman.
Yep.
But I was pretty sure it was seven for that committee. Can you take a look at that again?
I can. I can have the administration help me do that, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any new business? We do have, I guess we do on our agenda have one bit of new business. And there was a request, request that came from the Joint Historical, Joint Historic Commission to consider the appointment of Leslie Dunleavy as the Recording Secretary for the Joint Historic Commission. It's on the agenda. I suppose we make this appointment by motion. It'd probably be the cleanest way to do it. So I would ask for a motion to appoint Leslie as the Recording Secretary. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions from the board on this? I know the borough, also borough contributes to her stipend and we contribute to the stipend. It's a couple hundred dollars a year, I think. And it's budgeted. So any comments from the board? From the public? Seeing none, I'll call that question. Those in favor of appointing Leslie Dunleavy as the Recording Secretary for the Joint Historic Commission, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right. I'm to the end of my agenda. No need for an executive session. And with, without further ado, then I'll, and without objection, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone. And go Eagles.